We'll call this meeting on the Silver City Town Council to order. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda with any action is council comments. Counselor Bedison, you want to start?
Thank you, Mayor. No comments.
Thank you, Counselor Cook.
No comments.
Thank you, Counselor Ray.
We'll keep it up.
Counselor Rose.
I'm going to have to pass on the comments.
Well, I'm glad you all saved time for me.
That's right.
I've got a couple of things. One is, many people may have heard about the last minute of the legislative session, and they passed a bill that has set up to phase out the hold harmless. And there's been a lot of press coverage about the bill. There was a lot of press coverage about how the bill was passed. And there's been comments made in the paper that if we managed our town right, then it wouldn't be an issue. And I find that very offensive. And I find it offensive, especially coming from somebody who has never looked at our finances and the management of our town. And for them to come out in the paper and say that every municipality in the town would -- will be okay if they wouldn't just not political posture over this. The fact of the matter is, because it was done in such a hurry, the fiscal impact report, which is all of these pages, actually shows that the general fund will lose money in FY-16, '17. And had they gone through the proper process, had they allowed for input by the municipalities, by the rest of the state, as they fought so hard to do on the driver's license bill, then maybe some of these issues that are showing up in the FIR and others that are reviewing the bill would not have been in the bill. This is the amendment that was put on with 17 minutes left. It came over from the Senate and went to the House. This amendment has 35 pages. They got less than 17 minutes because they didn't even have copies of it when it crossed over to the House. They were scrambling to get copies so they could at least say they saw the bill before they voted. At the same time, they're passing a bill that requires we have our stuff together 72 hours before a meeting. And I find that that is a contradiction. It's offensive. It is -- I feel a strong neglect of their duty. It was not transparent. And in the long run, there's potential harm that comes out of that. We've got at least nine years of audits done on our town that have no findings. We followed all the rules. We balance our checkbook every month. Even with staff changes that we had this year, we balance our checkbook every month. The state hasn't balanced theirs in five years. And they want to come in and tell us that if we could manage our operations better, that this bill wouldn't affect. That's totally uncalled for. And on a lighter note, at the county commission meeting, there was a presentation done that we're proposing to do some quality-of-life bonds that the county would do. And the town has participated in the discussions to develop those projects. And we are partnering with Western as well. This would be a countywide grocery seats. It would be a countywide issue, and it's not being run through Silver City so that the residents of Silver City don't have to carry the entire burden for the county. The projects will support everybody in the county, and as well as Western. And it's very important that we support Western. Western, if you get a chance, listen to Dr. Shepherd, the president, speak about what his plans are for the university and the growth. And it's very impressive to hear his plans. It's also impressive that he's -- I honestly think he can pull it off. He's got a very in-depth plan for not just the projects, but how to fill the dorms, how to put students on campus, which puts students in our businesses. And really brings Western into the town, which for so many years, we've all been begging that Western be a part of the town, included in the town. And this is another avenue for doing that. One of the projects would be a baseball field that Western could use, and as well as the community, but it would be the home of the Western baseball team. The reason that that comes up, besides the fact that Western had a baseball team for many years and no longer does, is Grant County has an extensive history of baseball, including semi-pro ball. And it would -- it just seems like a good project, a good sport to add to Western and our community that also supports our roots. The improvements to the golf course. We have a great golf course. We have a new clubhouse being built very soon. And Alex is shaking his head yes. So it's very soon. The funding is already secured for that. However, the golf course cart paths are in terrible shape. And we think if, with the new clubhouse, new cart paths, and the wonderful maintenance that the group that's managing it does, and our staff with water, that we can definitely have an attraction to Grant County that fills up our hotels and brings in other revenues. The next item is a swimming pool. Many people have been waiting for that. We would lengthen the pool at Western and make sure that it was available to the public and be able to have swimming leagues and a Western swim team. Which having the Western women's swim team and soccer would facilitate them having baseball because they have to add two women's before they can add the baseball. And the last project would be a movie theater. And my thoughts on that are basically, a movie theater is just a necessity in a town. We have a college in town, young people. I just think that it's really critical infrastructure to have in a town is a movie theater. We've looked at numbers. We've looked at spreadsheets. We've talked to vendors. We've talked to all sorts of people. So we've pretty well got our ducks in a row on that. And if anybody has any comments regarding those projects, we'd like to hear them before we actually -- or the county actually spends the money to have a special election to fund the projects. And with that, anybody need round two? Counselor Cook asked that I explain on the hold harmless being phased out. There is an opportunity, if it comes down to it, that the town can replace the hold harmless. The funding that we've been getting since 2005, I believe. Let me back up. The hold harmless was put in in 2005, which eliminated the food and medical tax for, well, most medical. What they did was, because it was a legislative action done in Santa Fe, they held the towns and counties harmless, which means they funded the tax revenue that would have come to us through the normal process. They continued to fund us, and we got held harmless. We had no effect by them removing that tax. And they extended that, the medical, this year, if the governor signs it, which I don't doubt that she won't. So that the hold harmless actually would have grown had they not done this bill. One of the provisions that they put in to allow us to compensate for the loss in revenue is an increase of three-eighths of 1% in grocery seats tax on everything but medical and food. That would be done in -- if we have to. You know, I'm not a fan of raising taxes, but we also have to make sure that we can provide the necessary services that we're required to provide and that the citizens depend on. So we will watch that. You know, it's phased in very slowly, so it probably won't be the first probably three or four years before we really know what the effect on the operations of the town is. But that is an option out there. And it would not make sense to pass it before 2016, I believe. 15? So we'll just have to stay on top of it.
I'd also like to state that the total hold harmless based on today's numbers is 1.9 million total that we would end up losing once it's all phased out. Those three-eighths of a percent at today's numbers, which include hold harmless in it, so we don't know what the real effect's going to be, is that at today's numbers, the three-eighths would be $1.2 million. So we were only compensated partially, and we still are way off of what we -- knowing what the true effect is going to be. They, in 17 minutes, they eliminated and created a lot of problems because hold harmless is 18% of our total grocery seats taxes for the town of Silver City.
So removing 18% out of anybody's budget is going to be a cause of concern. And obviously, it's time that we really make sure that we're operating efficiently, but 18% is a large percentage. So they may force our hand at some point. Next item on the agenda is changes to the agenda. Hearing none. Next item is approval of minutes of the regular meeting of the Silver City Town Council on March 12, 2013.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor.
I move that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Town Council on March 12, 2013.
I said go ahead, Mayor.
There's a motion and second to approve. Is there any discussion? There's a motion and second, no discussion, to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Silver City Town Council on March 12, 2013. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is reports. Mr. Brown.
I'll let Chief Benkum go first.
Okay. Chief.
Thank you, Mayor Counsel. I just wanted to briefly report on a couple of things. The fire department has been asked through Kathy Anderson to coordinate some fire prevention, fire preparedness while -- is that right here? Okay. I'm sorry. We'll start over. Mayor Counsel, just wanted to report on a couple of things. The fire department will be conducting a couple of wildland fire defensible space presentations this coming month in April and possibly in May. Those efforts have been coordinated through Kathy Anderson, who has been really instrumental through the Neighborhood Alliance Group that she's involved with. Our first meeting will be at the Rotary Club at University. That will be held on April 2 at noon. Lieutenant Ray will be making a presentation on that day. On April 10, the Tyrone Committee Center will be holding, hosting the volunteers there. I believe Ellen Brown from the Forest Service will be there talking about defensible space also. We may be involved there too. One of the things that they wanted to do is educate the people that live there in Tyrone just how far their departments respond, what areas that they cover when they go out on fires. On April 16, we will again be involved at the Rip Barn. That will be presented to the Kiwanis Club. On April 13, the Pinos Altos Volunteer Fire Department will be holding an open house at the firehouse on the end of Little Walnut. I can't remember. I think it's Wagon Wheel, the firehouse out there. Ellen Brown will be making a presentation on defensible space again. She'll be talking about the 19 reasons people don't do it. They also will be talking about the Ready, Set, Go program. And it's very possible that we'd be involved May 8 and be talking to the subdivision up in Los Griegles. We don't know the time right now, so Kathy's working on that. And I want to thank her for being so instrumental in coordinating everything together. One last thing I wanted to mention is, I spoke with phone enforcement, Julie Solis this morning, and she has informed me that she's got, her and Jacqueline will be out driving around the neighborhood to enforce the town's ordinance on weeds and brushes and so forth. So I would ask the public, if you see one of these attached to your door, you know, pretty much specify what needs to be addressed, if you need to remove some of your brush or weeds. So I would rather that the public just be proactive and just do it and support our code enforcement officers. One last thing I wanted to say is, it doesn't make sense for one neighbor to keep their weeds down when the neighbor next door doesn't because fire does not discriminate. If we do have a fire, it will jump, it will start that neighbor on fire. So let's be proactive in that. One last thing I wanted to thank, Lori Ford and Katz. They have been presenting on Katz, the Ready, Set, Go program, and that is in English and Spanish version. And one last thing, I think on April 23, the fire department has been asked to participate in Career Day. That will be, I believe, April 29, and that'll be for three hours. And we want to make an effort to educate the young kids today that there's opportunities in the fire service. And right now, the volunteers are really struggling to get people involved in their departments. As you all know, most of the volunteers have people that have full-time jobs. A lot of them are a lot older, so we need young kids out there to participate. And it also gives them an opportunity, if we're seeking people in our department, we always look at people that have fire experience. So just keep an eye on that. And that's pretty much all I have. If there's anything.
Thanks, Jim.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mayor Counsel, I just wanted to let you know that I have already started, myself and staff have started working on the fiscal 2014 year budget. Currently, we have preliminary numbers for sanitation and water sewer. We have been looking at the water sewer fund. We do have some grocery seats taxes that we could revert back to the general fund to help strengthen the general fund up with all these changes. So I am working on some things to try to be able to do that within the next couple of years. We also are starting to look at, well, debt service. We will be coming as part of the agenda for the next council meeting. We hope to have the numbers for the general fund, the water sewer and sanitation fund so that we can do our first budget hearing in front of the council. So hopefully by the next council meeting, I'll have time to work with other departments that are involved in the general fund. But I've worked with sanitation, water sewer, all those so far. If you have any question or comments or anything that you would like for me to look at during the process between now and then, please get ahold of me so I can start working on them, see what I can work on.
Any report from the police department? Community development? Thanks, Jim. First item on the agenda is number 10, unfinished business. Item A, approval/disapproval of ordinance number 1218 and ordinance permitting the transfer of certain real property, commonly known as the tenants' court parking lot, to Silver Consolidated Schools, all pursuant to Chapter 48, Section 48-24 of the Town and Silver City Municipal Code. And if you recall, we had a NOI a couple of weeks back regarding the transfer of the property that passed and brought us to this point. The schools have yet to return any of Mr. Brown's messages. And at this point, we're, I'm not prepared to commit to town, and I entertain a motion to postpone action on ordinance number 1218.
Mr. Mayor, I move to postpone action on ordinance number 1218.
Could you give us a specific time frame when you postpone? To the next meeting?
We don't know.
Can we table it so that it doesn't happen?
No. Tableing it falls. It'll die tonight. We don't necessarily know if we want it to die tonight. Is that a requirement?
We have to postpone to a time not to exceed six months.
That's how you want it? Mr. Scanlon said postpone to a time not to exceed six months.
Mr. Mayor, my motion is to postpone this to a time not to exceed six months.
Mr. Mayor, a second. The motion is stated.
There's a motion and second to postpone action on ordinance number 1218 to a time not to exceed six months. Any discussion?
No, sir.
No, sir.
There's a motion and second, no discussion, to postpone action on ordinance number 1218 to a time not to exceed six months. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval/disapproval of two public celebration permit applications for the SRAM Tour of the Hila Bicycle Race Beer Garden on May 4, 2013, at 703 North Bullard Street, Silver City, New Mexico. License holders are High Desert Brewing Company of 1201 West Hadley Avenue, Las Cruces, New Mexico, 88005. And the second one is Little Toad Creek Distillery at 1122 Highway 35, Members, New Mexico, 88049. Jack and Michelle.
Good evening. I don't know if this makes a difference, but it's, instead of SRAM, title sponsored is now the Silver City's Tour of the Hila. And SRAM is now the presenting sponsor. So the actual title of our race now is Silver City's Tour of the Hila Powered by SRAM.
And we thank you.
It's irrelevant, but we did that so that we would get you to say that about three times.
Quickly.
Thank you.
Would you like us to just?
Any questions about the beer garden?
Tell us what you're going to do.
This will be our third year for the beer garden, and High Desert Brewing has been here, was here in Silver for last year's beer garden. And we were approached by Little Toad. Little Toad is a new establishment out there in the Members Valley at the intersection of 15 and 35. And they're, it's a young couple who purchased the property, has been rehabbing the property, doing work on the rooms. They have the restaurant remodeled. And they're also getting into microbrewing of beer and also doing a distillery, one of the first distilleries, I think, in New Mexico. And Teresa Dolberding approached us right after we talked to Bob Hadley from High Desert Brewing about being involved in the beer garden. And Bob was very gracious in allowing High Desert to come onboard. And so that's how we, oh, I'm sorry, Little Toad, Little Toad to come onboard. So it's, to me, it's a great opportunity to feature a local, new business that, you know, we've, our hope is to have, you know, more brew pubs in Silver City. It hasn't occurred yet. And Teresa and her husband are doing this out of Little Toad and has offered to come in and be a part of the beer garden. To me, it's just bringing more activities or from folks in our community, a part of our race. So that's, I see that as a real positive thing for the beer garden. And it would be located on the dirt lot between Morning Star and Western Stationers. It'll be ran from 11 o'clock to about 6 o'clock in the evening on Saturday, May 4, during the downtown criterium.
Any comments, questions? Counselor Bedison.
I just have one. So is each company providing three security?
People, so total, it's joint three rather than total six? Joint security between Little Toad and High Desert, yes.
Because each form said three, so I didn't know if it was a...
I don't know. Does it just be three total?
Yeah. I didn't know if it was three total or six total.
Six total.
Which way it was, so...
That I don't know. We can certainly get back to you on that.
No, it's just each form says three.
Said three?
That's what I asked, yeah.
I would imagine three then.
Okay. Once again.
Do you have more?
I just said each form, so High Desert Brewing would be providing three, and then Little Toad would providing three.
That's what they, yeah, that's what they indicated, yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
The applications are independent of each other, so they have to stand on their own ground. And they put down three, they'll have to provide three.
Correct.
That's what I wanted to say.
And they would be in the same confined area. I think that there's a map of what we do as far as coordinating off the area for the beer garden, and it shows Little Toad on their side of, say, the dirt lot inside the fenced-in area, and also High Desert on their side.
Correct. I think the point being made is that each application is separate, so each one has to provide their own security.
Right.
Okay, great.
Yes.
Thank you.
Robert? The application say SRAM Tour of the Hila Bicycle Race. The race is, has a new title. However, they sponsor is, remains Tour of the Hila Incorporated. Do they have to do a new form, or is this...
Well, we could just take note and do it AKA, also known as... So that's the event information.
Correct.
So what was your question?
Well, the event has a different name than the application, not substantially, but it's gone from SRAM to Silver Cities.
If you're just looking at description of the celebration, is that what you're concerned about, the description or the sponsor?
Description.
The description, as long as it puts us on notice what we're talking about, that's good enough.
Okay.
It's not like the corporate name has changed, or the sponsors changed, or there's been a name change. been a name change of the business.
I just want to have the discussion so they don't get caught in, in a couple of weeks with, with a bad permit.
As long as the council is aware of what the event is by this discussion, then there's no problem.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Everybody's aware that the SRAM Tour of the Hila Bicycle Race Beer Garden is the same as the SRAM, or the Silver City Tour of the Hila.
Powered.
Powered by SRAM. You're welcome, SRAM.
Understood.
Entertain a motion? Mr. Mayor, Counselor?
I move to approve of two public celebration permits applications for the SRAM Tour of the Hila, AKA Silver City, Hila Bike Race Beer Garden on May 4th, 2013 at 703 North Bullard Street, Silver City, New Mexico. License holders are number one, High Desert Brewing Company, 1201 West Hadley Avenue, Las Cruces, New Mexico, 88005, and number two, Little Toad Creek Distillery, 1122 Highway 35, Members, New Mexico, 88049.
Just a second.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion as stated.
There's a motion and second. Is there any discussion?
No, sir.
No, sir.
There's a motion and second, and it's been read numerous times, I won't repeat it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
I'm sorry, did we need to do something in regards to the Episcopal Church and its proximity?
Oh, yeah, we do.
So we're not complete?
We're not done.
I just realized that we have to do the waiver.
I forgot the waiver.
Yeah.
I even had it written down here. So somebody needs to, to move to reconsider.
Mr. Mayor, I move to reconsider. Do I need to read the whole thing out?
No, just say item A.
Item A, under new business.
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
There's a motion and second to reconsider item A under new business, which we just did, is, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item A is back on the agenda. And we need to make sure in the motion that we include allowing the waiver of New Mexico statutes annotated 60-6B-10 of the prohibition of the dispensing of alcoholic beverages within 300 feet of churches or schools. It's in that letter.
I'll have to start all over again.
If you don't mind.
No, I don't mind.
Next.
Okay. Here we go again. I move to approve of two public celebration permits applications for the Silver City SRAM Hila Bike Race Beer Garden on May 4th, 2013 at 703 North Bullard Street, Silver City, New Mexico. License holders are number one, High Desert Brewing Company, 1201 West Hadley Avenue, Las Cruces, New Mexico, 88005. Number two, Little Toad Creek Distillery, 1122 Highway 35, Members, New Mexico, 88049. With the waiver, our New Mexico statutes annotated 60-6B-10 of the prohibition on the dispensing of alcohol within 300 feet of church property.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion as stated.
There's a motion and second to approve the two public celebration permit applications with the waiver to 60-6B-10 of the New Mexico statutes. Is there any discussion?
No, sir.
No, sir.
There's a motion and second, no discussion, for the approval of the two public celebration permit applications with the waiver. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you again.
Wait, take two, got it right. Next item on the agenda, approval disapproval of bid number 12/13-9, street and drainage improvement, Alice Garcia, Texas, and Bullard Streets.
Mayor and Counsel, I want to see four bids for the above referenced bid project. It's, it's our CDBG project because we weren't able to meet the threshold for the, to apply for this year's CDBG due to the fact that we didn't get our grant agreement until late October and threshold was early November to complete the project. We decided to wait and do it when there was good weather during the year, and we will be able to meet thresholds, we could apply next year, this next funding cycle. But we did receive three, four bids and it's staff's recommendation to award the, the bid to Renegade Construction LLC contingent upon clearance and approval from DFA. And we need to, need that contingency because DFA has started a new process of vetting the, the contractors for state projects. And it'll take a couple of weeks for them to do that.
Any discussion?
One thing I'd like to say, add is that the, the grant amount for the project was So the lowest bid is substantially lower than that, and we'll be able to change orders, some additional work in there.
Any discussion or motion? Counselor?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve bid 1213-9, street and drainage improvement, Alice Garcia, Texas, and Bullard Streets to Renegade Construction LLC for, for... Okay, here we go.
It's a total.
For the total of... I don't have a tool.
Okay.
Total with... 339, 599, .99 without the GRTs. That's what I said right there. Contingent on clearance of approval by DFA.
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
There's a motion and second to approve bid number 1213-9, street drainage improvements for Alice Garcia, Texas, and Bullard Streets by staff recommendation to Renegade Construction LLC for a total without GRT of 339, 599, and 99 pennies. Contingent on clearance and approval by DFA. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now comes the big one, guys. Don't struggle with this. Counselor?
I think I moved to approve, I moved to...
I second that motion.
There's a motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.